Okay, I will call Finance to Order at 6 o'clock. Members present, Kevin Myers, Terry Spiegel, and myself as Acting Chair. Dan Wireball is absent. Any public participation? Okay, none being, I will turn it over to either Jeff and for Arcadis.
So I'm just going to introduce our visitors from Arcadis. We're honored to have them tonight. We've worked with Arcadis for many, many years on the wastewater treatment plant. Terry, do you remember how long we've worked with Arcadis?
It's got to be, what, 20 years maybe? Yeah, I'd say maybe 15.
They've guided us well through our EPA consent decree and always given us good advice. We've been working with them on a strategic plan for the wastewater treatment plant, as well as for Phase Two with the folks here, and put a lot of effort into it. They're here to present it tonight. So we have Joe Jacobs from Arcadis, Sherry Luce, and Laura McGinnis. So they'll be here to present the slides and answer any questions for you. So, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Hello. It's been awhile since I've been here. And some of the information you've seen before, there's a little more detail added in and a little more content in terms of funding. So, get started. The next slide, still on your front page, just the agenda. We're going to talk about the city's history, the drivers, why US EPA is requiring this of the city, Phase One projects, goals and results. Yes, am I not?
I got a question.
Oh, yes.
Does the rest of the City Council not be able to participate on following along with copies?
We made copies.
There's one here.
Yeah, I forgot to pass them off. I'm sorry. You got it, right? Or is it?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I made copies where you guys.
You need this one, Jeff?
I'm sorry. No, I made, I just forgot to pass them.
Thanks.
Jenny.
Does this go with the key?
Yes, it does. Okay. So we'll talk about Phase One, what happened, the goals, and some of the benefits. Phase Two, which is what we're working through right now and ultimately will be negotiated with US EPA. And then the additional discussion tonight is on financing and rates. And we'll talk about what are the next steps. So if you flip over, quick overview of your system, the map on the third slide at the top of the second page. This has been updated slightly. There are now 20 combined sewer overflows. Three have been closed. One bypass at the wastewater treatment plant. And the city's done significant efforts in doing partial sewer separation. But, the combined sewer system still conveys wet weather flow. And when there's excess rain, excess infiltration, it does spill into the river via the CSO. So, the fourth slide is, you've seen this before, most of you, a description of how a CSO works. So, under, on the left, under low-flow conditions, flow from homes and businesses, the sanitary flow, is conveyed to the street in the pipes under the street. And instead of going to the river, it flows into a smaller pipe to the interceptor which parallels the river and gets to the wastewater treatment plant. But when there's rainfall, especially a lot of rainfall, the sewers in the city, some of them still collect rainfall via catch basins that go directly to the combined sewer system. And then there's a structure that regulates. It tries to push as much flow as it can into the interceptor to get to the plant. But at some point, it becomes too much, it overwhelms the regulator, and it flows out to the river. So that's what US EPA is looking to reduce, is the volume and the number of occurrences. And this is all driven on Slide Five, the next page, from the Clean Water Act. So this is an enforceable law that regulates pollutant discharge to protect water quality. And a subset of that is what Tim Wood deals with at the plant, is the NPDES permit. So that's the permit that says you're allowed to discharge to the river under the Clean Water Act because this is your treatment plant. And here are the limits you must meet. And then also, under the Clean Water Act, is the combined sewer overflow policy that was nearly 20 years later. And that's the framework US EPA uses to control CSOs, to ultimately protect water quality. So all cities, not just Bucyrus, with combined sewer overflows are required to comply. Bucyrus has 20 CSOs still that exceed the legal limit for overflows.
Laura, what is the legal limit?
That's a good question. The Clean Water Act, has it written, and there's two different metrics. One is four overflows per year. So if it rains and CSO 3, 6, and 9 spill, that counts as one, even if the ones closer to the plant don't. US EPA can also use a percent capture. And that's a calculation that looks at what percent of flow generated, whether it's wet weather or sewage, actually makes it to the plant. So they have two metrics. I've also seen them hold communities to higher standards. And that's where the negotiation comes in. And that's why it's not a hard and fast rule, which is written.
Are we close to being legal, or have we still got?
You've got more than.
A long way to go.
They, initially, when we started discussions with US EPA in 2010, 2011, they wanted you to, we were negotiating to get you to 10 activations a year, where the Clean Water Act is four. Because at some point, there's diminishing returns. We'll have to renegotiate that because nothing is written in stone. And that's the way they operate. They don't like to put things in writing because then other communities can look at what's been done elsewhere. But, why does Bucyrus have to do this? On the next slide. It's, as you'll hear, it's, there's a lot of money. You've already spent a lot of money to date. But continuing to be proactive and doing this on your terms, understanding what projects you want to undertake and why, which is what we've been helping the city with, shows in good faith that you're continuing to make progress. And we don't want US EPA to come down with stricter legal action like findings and orders or consent decree, which will likely require you to do more and will cost more in terms of fines, because they'll put you on a tighter schedule. So we really want to have an open dialogue with US EPA to keep this more favorable for your timeframe and for your budget. So we want to avoid stringent legal action. We want to be a good neighbor to downstream communities. Because you're at the headwaters, or near the headwaters of the Sandusky River, this impacts downstream, not just your neighbors downstream, but all the way into Lake Erie. And if you've heard about the algal blooms in Lake Erie runoff from the farmland areas, are a big contribution to the algal blooms. And this is one way Ohio and US EPA are trying to halt those conditions in Lake Erie, is looking at the smaller communities upstream of Lake Erie. Another reason to do this is, and you'll hear about the improvements that are planned at the treatment plant. The last major upgrade was in 2000, whereas the water treatment plant was rebuilt in 2017. So the wastewater treatment plant is in need of major improvements. This will also, part of the upgrades include increasing capacity. So we'll have the opportunity to encourage economic development and have capacity to plant so when you do have large industries that are looking, you're better prepared to accept their flows. And I think a big driver to continue to be proactive is shovel-ready projects will position the city to apply for grants and funding, as you'll hear more about later. That's a big driver, is to be shovel-ready. And why do we have to do this now? On top of, because US EPA mandates it, there's a lot of funding options right now, and Sherry Luce will talk more about that. We don't know how long some of these grant and loan options are going to exist. So it'd be good to be prepared and jump on them. And the same with the low-interest loan programs. So, history, there's a lot on Slide Seven. I presented this before, but the negotiations really began in 2008. And that's when US EPA started looking at Bucyrus instead of Ohio EPA in terms of combined sewer overflows. And we looked at alternatives, we proposed plans, did a lot of negotiations with US EPA that led to a signed long-term control plan, Phase One agreement, in September of 2015. So in the last, it's been eight years, it's been, the requirements of Phase One have been completed, constructed, and reviewed. So the initial planning and management of Phase One included having signs at your CSO, is doing sewer inspections, and completing the biannual reports, which we still do to date. There's actually one due August 1st. The major improvement projects written in the Phase One plan were the Upper Buffalo Stormwater Detention Basin, stormwater improvements on Southern and Hopley, trunk extensions and local sewers near Southern, and the Plymouth Street Storm Sewer Construction in conjunction with ODOT. Also in that was an asset management plan, which Arcadis completed. And that really was done for both the treatment plant and the collection system. And that looks at, it's a mechanism and a process to basically identify your highest-risk assets. You know, if a pump should fail, or if a pipe should break, what's the impact on your residents or at the plant? And it gives you a framework for identifying how to fund, what's the high risk, how to prioritize improvements. And that did lead into the recommended plant improvements. Additional evaluations of Phase Two were to look at stormwater redirection projects and the wet weather treatment facility, which we'll talk about more, too. In addition, the city has completed several other projects, storm sewers in specific areas, river dredging near Mansfield, on the Mansfield Road overpass. And Jeff Dunn has been religiously looking for large inflows from some of the larger pervious areas, and trying to move either field tiles or connections that should go to the creeks rather than the sanitary sewers. And the cost to date is just under $10 million. And that's, I know, a lot of money, a lot of big projects. And some of the benefits, on the next slide, included, one of the inspections in the interceptor identified a large mass of debris that was constricting flow. That was removed so that increased conveyance and can reduce the number of overflows at the local CSOs. Tim has noticed that the flow rates at the plant come down quicker after rainfall events. It used to be, Terry was there, if it rained, the flow might see elevated flows for days. And that's just increased wear on the equipment, increased chemical usage, and increased effort on the plant to make sure they're balancing the flows. Now, with some of the improvements that have been constructed, the flow rates reduce quicker, which is good. And then, everything the city's done at the plant and in the system has helped understand the assets in the field. I know, there's been a lot more with the inspections and with, Jeff Dunn has been out, has his guys out there locating all the manholes with GPS, you know, understanding how the system is connected, making sure that, you know, they're getting measurements if needed, and looking at some of the conditions. So that's just given the city a better understanding of the shape of their system. Benefits in the collection system, decreased water and basement complaints, increased proactive maintenance, increased understanding, and three CSOs have been closed in the last few years. So that's definitely a plus. What US EPA has required for Phase Two was to develop a plan to remove 50% of the remaining CSO volume. And the big project that will check that box is a wet weather treatment facility at the plant. And we've already shared that information with US EPA. The discussion we had with them when we submitted the proposed plan two years ago was the city needs more time. Right now, they're asking for a five-year plan, which is really not feasible considering how long it takes to go through design and construction, and then to assess the post-construction benefits. And VPA knows that there will be a Phase Three to continue to get CSO volumes out. So, the proposed Phase Two plans, and many of these you've seen before, heard about, looking at, under Slide 10, planning and management. Investigating river intrusion, I feel like the city's done a great job looking at where the actual outfalls go from the collection system to the river. There's gates, as they get old, they don't always close properly. Let's see, seven of the gates have been replaced, 12 more in order. And then the very large gate on the Buffalo Run Interceptor, it's quite large, looking at options on how to reduce, sorry, replace that gate. That should make a big difference when the river rises up. We don't want water from the creek, I'm sorry, from the river to get back into the system. So, we have seen some benefit there already. Like I said, looking at getting out some of the large inflow from the large pervious parking lots or roof on larger buildings that are connected to the combined system and really shouldn't be. Other proposed improvement projects, the wet weather treatment at the plant, additional storm sewer, storm reduction or sewer separation. And then McKiever and Associates let me know that the Northwest Sewer Separation Project has been bid. And construction should be completed within a year. And then Phase Two and Three will go out for bid. And then there's also a project in the works for the Northeast Sewer Side, a separation project. And that'll go into engineering next year. And the purpose, the timing of that one is to correlate with paving projects. Because the last thing we want to do when we're doing sewer work is a tear-up roadway that's just got laid down. So, so the city's continuing to do projects. So the timeline, so, like I said, we last submitted a proposed plan to US EPA in June of 2021. I haven't heard much from them, other than submitting the six-month reports every month. Tim Wood submits his monthly report to US EPA on the plant. The plan now is, after we present to you, is to start getting momentum to get a plan to US EPA by the end of August. And that's going to take a lot more discussion on the finances, but we need to get something in front of them. Because they're, at some point, they're going to come back and say, "What are you doing?" And say, "Well, we've been submitting the six-month reports, there's an update every six months." But we want to have a plan that everyone feels comfortable with and is affordable, given to US EPA, ideally by the end of August. Because ideally, the construction, not the construction, the design and the engineering would start in 2024. And since we've submitted the plan to US EPA two years ago, the city has undertaken a wastewater treatment plant facilities assessment. And that, I think, really helped identify the condition of the plant. How, you know, do you need an entirely new plant, like the water treatment plant? Or can enough repairs and replacements, new equipment be included in improvement projects such that not only is the plant brought up to have more longevity, but also can accept additional capacity to encourage growth? And we have that rolled into the plans now. That rolled in, on top of the asset management recommendations of where the highest risks are. And then the continued evaluation of river intrusion, large inflow sources, and assessment on the user rates, and assessment of funding sources, which Sherry will talk about, too. So I'm going to stop and see if there's any questions. Because I know that was a lot. And then I'm going to let Joe Jacobs come up and talk a little bit more in detail about the plant improvements. Okay?
Okay. So, we started this process of evaluating the plant probably a little more than a year ago. And it's a very thorough analysis of the plant. We worked very closely with Tim and his staff. You know, what we started out, we, you know, visited the plant, assessed the condition of, you know, existing equipment, concrete tanks. We collected data from Tim. We evaluated that data to establish, you know, where are we currently from a capacity standpoint? We did a process analysis and developed a process model of the plant to understand what we can get out of the existing plant from a capacity standpoint. And what we found is that, from a capacity standpoint, you're currently treating, you know, on average, about 3.2 million gallons a day. The plant's rated for approximately 3.4 million gallons a day. So, you know, you're running pretty close to, you know, your current, your actual flows are running pretty close to what your design capacity of the plant is. So, we took a lot of that data, that information that we collected, we looked at the condition of the existing assets, and we developed a plan for, you know, expanding the plant, but also for addressing, you know, asset management needs, concrete repairs, equipment replacement, things, things like that. As well as working with Laura on the long-term control plan and understanding, you know, how much more flow do we need to get out of the plant to be able to achieve the goals in the collection system for CSO reductions and CSO overflows? So, you know, the original plan, what we established was that we think we need to increase the plant capacity to about 3.8 MGD, million gallons per day, to be able to handle growth in the community and to have a little bit of reserve capacity to be able to attract some industry. But probably more importantly, what really impacts the facilities the most, I think, is how much we got to get out of the system to be able to meet the long-term control plan improvements, or the CSO overflow reductions in the CSO events, you know, discharges to the river. And, you know, working with Laura on the collection system model, we need to get the plant up to about 17.5 million gallons a day from a peak wet weather standpoint. Currently, you know, based on our capacity evaluation, you can get about 7.5 million gallons of flow through the plant. So you can see, you know, we really need, you know, roughly another 10 million gallons of capacity, wet weather capacity at the plant, to be able to achieve the goals up in the collection system. So, one of the alternatives that we looked at, and we looked at a number of different alternatives to be able to do that, but probably the most cost-effective alternative to do that is, is to install what we call a high-rate treatment system. And there's a number of different types of systems, but what we're basically looking at is a filtration-type system. So, you know, so if you go back and you can, the color's a little funky on the screen there, but the improvements in green are really improvements that are necessary to be able to, to increase the plant capacity to that 17.5 million gallons a day. So, you know, basically, what we need to do is, we need more influent pumping capacity, you know, to increase the pumping from the sewer system from 7.5 to 10 MGD. We need new influent screening to be able to take rags and debris, you know, plastics and things out that will impact the filters facility. And then we're looking at a new filter facility with disinfection and a separate outfall out to the river. So that's part of, you know, the improvements that are necessary to control, or to comply with the long-term control plan. Then we also looked at, as I mentioned before, the capacity improvements, to take it from 3.4 on an average daily basis to 3.8. And those are kind of the improvements that you see in blue on the screen. So, that includes some improvements to the grit removal system. But most of the cost, I think, is, you'll see, is in the addition of a third final clarifier to the plant, and the addition of another aeration tank and blower's aeration system to be able to increase the capacity. And then we'll need additional ultrabolus disinfection, you know, to be able to treat that additional flow. So you see those improvements in blue. And then on top of that, there were some asset management things that need to be taken care of. The tertiary filters are in need of replacement. And there's some improvement work that needs to be done at the solids handling facilities for the sludge holding tanks and the de-watering operation. So, the report that we put together in a draft standpoint, you know, compiled all this information and, you know, all these recommendations. And then, over the last few months, what we've been trying to work out is, you know, how do we want to proceed with implementation of these improvements? See if you can get to the next slide. There's really, we kind of came up with, we looked at a lot of different options, but we really, it boils down to two different options. So, option one that you're seeing in the green there, that's kind of a bare essentials. That includes the improvements that you saw in green. Basically, the improvements to the pumping station, the new screening facility, as well as the high-rate treatment system for, you know, handling those peak wet weather flows and the disinfection. But also includes some of the highest-risk asset management needs at the treatment plant as well. So there are things like, the tertiary filters, I think, are included in there, as well as improvements to the aeration tanks, concrete repairs, replacement of diffusers and air piping. You know, there's some roof replacements, and, you know, there's some electrical needs. So, but that addresses really, you know, all of the highest-risk assets that were identified. And so, the total construction cost for those improvements, including the high-rate treatment system, we're estimating at about $24.5 million. Now, you know, if you were to go out for bids, that's, that's the number that we're, we would be looking for from a bidder or from a contractor. But to be able to implement a project of that size, there are some additional costs. And so when we were looking at rates and affordability, we wanted to make sure we captured those costs as well. So there's costs for engineering services, there's administration fees for things like, you know, loan fees, permit application fees, things like that. And then if we finance through the Water Pollution Control Loan Fund, which is through Ohio EPA, you know, they, there's some, some requirements as part of that program. They basically ask you to hold 5% of the construction cost in contingency for change orders during construction, as well as, you know, there's permit fees and, not permit fees, but financing fees, and I think like the first year's capitalized interest. So, there's a lot of, a lot of those fees that, you know, that are actual, that are costs to the project, that we want to make sure we capture when we start looking at rate increases and things like that. So that, that comes up to the $31.6 million for that option one. Now, option two is to basically do everything that you saw in the previous diagram. So that includes, option two includes all the, all the improvements in option one, but it also includes, you know, the, all the, all the, all the improvements shown in blue. So that would include, you know, a new aeration basin, or additional aeration basin, additional final clarifier, you know, blower building, as well as taking care of some of the improvements in the solids handling areas as well, that Tim needs. And so, that's estimated to be, from a construction cost, $42.4 million. And then again, with, with that construction cost, we added those engineering and the administrative costs on top of that, too, to make sure when we were looking at rates, or what the impacts of rates would be, that we had captured those costs as well. That brings the total project up to $54,600,000 to do everything. So those are kind of the two options that we're looking at at this point.
Can I stop you for a couple of questions?
Absolutely.
That relate to that?
Sure.
If we're looking at the differences between option one and option two, everything that's added in with option two, how much more will that give us as far as capacity, or will it just better our operation with similar capacity?
Okay. So, so with option one, you know, we would not be increasing the average daily flow rate capacity. So, as I mentioned before, you know, you're currently at 3.2 million gallons a day.
And we'd stay there, okay.
You would, you would basically stay there, yeah. And your, your, your peak wet weather capacity through the treatment plant portion, you know, is about 7.5 million gallons, you would stay there. Now, we would add 10 with the high-rate treatment system, so you would still get the 17.5 for the wet weather.
So really, option one? So, really, option one's main goal is going to be to reduce our CSOs?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and taking care of some of those more critical needs at the plant.
But really, nothing else in the eyes of the EPA?
That's correct, yeah, yeah. Option two would, would give you that additional capacity.
Gotcha.
And you will get loading, extra loading in the option two, right?
That, that, that's correct. The loading, the loading comes, the loading comes with the capacity, yeah. And so, and, and there is quite a bit of loading because, you know, as the mayor had mentioned before, you know, we're looking at some food service areas, right?
Yeah, sure.
What is loading?
Okay, okay. Sorry, I'm an engineer. I get a little, I get a little technical. So, you know, loading is, are things like ammonia, things like total suspended solids. So, there's an increase in total suspended solids. And, and, and BOD, which is biological oxygen demand. So, it's, that's kind of a measure of organic-type materials that are being discharged to the system that need to be treated. So, you know, so the increase in capacity, you know, we kind of skewed it to handle a little bit more loading as far as BOD, total suspended solids and ammonia than, you know, than the current averages in the system, only because I think, you know, the mayor had indicated that some of those service areas might be food-related industries. Those tend to be very, you know, very heavy in, in loading type, type parameters.
Thank you.
So, I, I know, you know, it's a lot of money. You know, even option one's a lot of money. So, why don't we go to the next slide? So, you know, I've been around a little bit in this industry. I've been doing a lot of work here recently in a number of different plants. So, we, we felt like it was important to provide some comparisons to what we're looking at spending here in Bucyrus to what some other communities are spending. And so, I compiled a list of some fairly recent projects. Seems to be really a lot of work going on in central Ohio right now. Particularly with this intel push, you know, in southwest Licking County, there's quite a bit of work going on. People are trying to gear up for population growth and expansion. So, we've got some pretty good numbers. So, as an example, Circleville, Ohio, you know, they're a community south of Columbus on 23. Their average daily flow rate's about four MGD. That's another plant that hasn't been upgraded in a long, a long time. And so, we're, I think we're actually in construction now on that. So, we've got bid prices for that. But, you know, they weren't really looking for a capacity expansion. They're just basically looking to improve their facility because they haven't done any work there in a long time. And, you know, the bid prices that came in on that, you know, they're looking at spending about $38.4 million. Delaware County, Ohio, is a, it's a little larger plant. It's a six MGD plant. It's currently under construction right now. You know, it's, it's, we're really not looking at increasing capacity there either, but they're looking at spending about $48 million. I've got Lancaster, Ohio on there twice, the Upper Hocking. You know, the original construction of that plant was a new construction, new greenfield plant back in 2011. That cost $36 million for a two MGD plant. And we're currently in construction to expand that facility to add another two MGD to that. And that came in at $32 million, a little over $32 million. So, you know, four MGD plant there, you know, is about $68 million, you know, from, you know, from a greenfield status. You know, the southwest Licking County, again, with all the intel plant that's going in there, they're looking at a lot of growth in that area. You're, they're building a new plant. It's a Wagner facility. It's a new greenfield plant that's two and a half MGD capacity. That's, that was in $68 million. My eyes, 65, I don't know, wait. $63 million is what that came in at. We're also working with southwest Licking County right now. At their, they're looking at building another new plant. It's the Raccoon Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant. I don't have that on this list because we're still developing the master plan for that. But, you know, the phase one cost is, you know, is going to be in that 60 to $65 million range. It's a new, again, a new greenfield plant. Salem, Michigan, is another plant that's, I think it's in design right now. They're getting close to the 90% submittal. They're really not looking at expanding it or expanding capacity there either, just upgrading the plant. And they're, they're basically spending $66 million. Wapakoneta, Ohio, is, is another project that's, I think it's under construction. It's a five million, five million gallon a day plant. They're at, they're at $65 million. You know, Wapakoneta's kind of a community about the same size as Bucyrus here, you know, you know, population-wise. And they basically went a different route. They're basically looking at building a new greenfield plant adjacent to their existing plant instead of upgrading their plant. And you can see, it's, it's a significant more amount, more to build a new greenfield plant than it is to try to upgrade your existing plant. So, you know, those are one of those, those are one of the alternatives that we looked at. Go ahead.
Joe, when you, when you say a greenfield plant, what is a greenfield plant? Is that just a totally brand-new plant?
Totally brand-new plant, basically taking a cornfield and building a new plant on it. Versus, versus taking a plant that we've got existing tankage in the ground, existing infrastructure to work with. You know, we're, you know, we're looking at saving $18, $20 million by upgrading the existing plant versus building it, you know, going off to, you know, a new cornfield somewhere and building a new plant, so.
What would the, with option two, what would the additional, how many gallons, millions of gallons would we be able to handle with that addition?
We're, we're looking about another half a million gallons of flow.
Joe?
Yeah.
The, the other plants on this list, are they, are they adding wet water facilities or not?
No, the, most of the ones that we're looking at here are not. The only one that, that kind of is, is the Wilmington one, the one, the one on the end. You know, they're, they're looking at a sequencing batch reactor-type system, which has some advantages from a wet weather standpoint. But most of these are separate sanitary sewer systems versus combined.
I thought there were.
Yeah. Circleville's a separate system, but boy, they have some pretty high peak-to-average flowing, so.
Behind you.
Yeah, yeah, sure, absolutely.
Here, follow me.
You know, I, I don't know that we've ever discussed it. I was hoping that we were going to discuss it prior to you being here tonight. But, you know, we're owners of two sewer treatment plants. How's the EPA looking at us for Oak Drive?
That I don't know.
Those are pretty small. I mean, there's, there's actually, we have actually three out in the county.
Yeah.
So, we have four plants. We talked about maybe putting a lift station to catch Lynn Meyer and Morton.
Morton.
Yes. But there, the flow there is very, it's like 2,500 gallons per day.
Is there any way that we can hide Oak Drive into our prime area thing that it would be quite costly to get our sewage from Oak Drive back to Bucyrus?
Well, we talked about looking for some grants.
We have Jennifer and Jeanette working on, looking for some grants for doing that as a separate project and having a lift station and we would be able to get rid of Morton and Lynn Meyer.
So, would that be part of our sewer rates though?
They're on a separate rate. So, that's going to have to be something that's going to get talked about. If they eventually flow into the city rate, then they're going to have to be on the city rate program. But right now, they're paying, what, twice as much for being out there. And they still don't leave a whole lot of operating money left to even fix anything. And they're going to be working the next five years, I'm sure. But we've been talking to Jennifer about getting a grant to actually run a new line on Thursday, 3:30, with the lift station bringing them in. Did you draw some up? He hasn't said anything, so.
So, then just with part of the sewer rates and the lift station that we have on Beale Avenue, I mean, is there, I mean, is there going to be upgrades into that, that lift station there as well?
I mean, it may need upgrades soon, but there's, it's just two pumps and the structure's pretty good. So, I, I don't see a whole lot of money being spent there. Same with the ones out in the industrial park. They're, they're all in pretty good shape. And those are, most of the city's gravity. There's only, we only have a few, a few lift stations.
Okay. I, I was just trying to look at it as a future that, you know, if we're going to do it, make sure that we don't get caught behind the eight ball.
Were those included in the asset management?
The lift stations are.
Lift stations, yes.
The, the package plates in the county are not.
Is it a different?
Yeah, we know, we know required.
But I think, and Joe or I can correct me, but I think as, we have a good chance of getting that funded. I don't know how much, but a good portion of it because we're regionalizing, bringing stuff from the county and then bringing it into the city. So, and then you have, you have a better chance, but we heard that about the water line too, but we need to have a lot of funding to grab it. But it's supposed to, so that's what they're working on right now.
Okay. Okay. So, I think that's pretty much what I had to say. If there's any more questions, turn it over to Sherri. Sherri will kind of talk to you about the numbers.
Okay.
What process can I use?
All right, thank you, Joe. Again, my name is Sherri Luce and I got the pleasure of telling you about raising your rates. All right. So, best funding source for this project is going to be Ohio EPA's Water Pollution Control Loan Fund. And the nomination period for construction projects actually is opening up soon. It opens up every August. And, you know, I would recommend that nominations be going in every year because it doesn't commit you to moving forward the project. But, you know, potentially, you're, you're getting your project on the list for consideration of funding. There are, there is a potential for some principal forgiveness, which is EPA speak for grants. And right now, you know, they have unprecedented amounts of money coming in, but nonetheless, it is very competitive. I double-checked and Bucyrus does qualify for principal forgiveness, but there are a lot of other communities that do too. And oftentimes, you know, a key to, you know, being competitive with that funding is having a shovel-ready project because they put a lot of emphasis on readiness to proceed when they're going through and ranking the projects and selecting which ones are, you know, at the top of the list. Let's see, next slide. Okay. So, I was, so with Ohio EPA too, they have 0% design loans. And they've not always had 0% for planning and design. They have for a few years now. We're hoping it continues. It's not something that's guaranteed. Each year, EPA puts together what they call Program Management Plan for this funding program. And they come up with basically the methodology that they'll use to score and rank the projects, how they'll allocate their limited amount of grant funding. And, you know, they may use some of that in the form of grants. Some of it is in the form of subsidizing the interest rates. I mean, pretty much everyone going through this program gets a subsidized interest rate. But the design, planning and design loans are at 0% for five years. And, you know, certainly one advantage of that is you're not incurring interest and you don't have to start paying on those design loans until five years is up or presumably before then, that's getting rolled into a construction loan. And so, you know, they're, they would be the major funder of this project. Next slide. There is potential for other grant programs. I kind of went through the traditional ones that are out there. You know, it's something that I think the city would certainly want to apply for these and, and work towards them. But in going through and doing a rate analysis, I did not assume that the city would get any of them, just to be conservative. Because we hope that, you know, there might be an opportunity to bring in a few of these. But the other thing to consider is with a project this large, the grant sources are relatively small. And so, you don't want to hold up the construction of the project chasing after a small grant if, you know, the potential inflation on that project is going to, you know, kind of negate the value of the grant. But there are some out there. Certainly, I think it is worth talking to Ohio EPA and having a meeting with them. You know, one opportunity I see is maybe to talk to them about their interest rates. Right now, the city is just over the limit for us, what they call a small system rate. If you were under $10,000, you'd actually get a better interest rate, but.
$10,000 population.
$10,000 population, right. But I think it's worth getting in front of them and talking to them. They also administer the H2 Ohio Grant Fund. And they, you know, they have some discretion as far as which projects get that money. So, I, I think there are some opportunities and, you know, certainly would encourage you to go after them. But the rate scenarios that I ran through, I assume that the city would not have any of that additional grant funding. Next slide. So, you know, one thing I looked at was affordability and, you know, looking at where your rates are now. You know, certainly, I realize that your water rates have, you know, they went up after that project. And, you know, on the water side, you're probably right about where they would consider, you know, that threshold of affordability. But on the sewer side, you know, you're, you're sitting at probably a little bit below, well, below 1% of the median household income for an average residential user. And basically, what we mean by that is we're adding up all of the sewer bills over the course of a year for an average residential customer and dividing that by the median household income for the city and coming up with a percentage. And now, US EPA, when they are looking at affordability, they're typically saying that a community could afford up to 2, maybe even 2.5% of the median household income. But right now, as far as where the sewer rates are, you're sitting at less than 1% for an average customer. All right, next slide. Okay, so this is the slide I figured you guys would want to spend the most time on. And there is a separate handout to make it a little bit bigger. It's still very small print. But basically, I ran through actually several scenarios, but we kind of came down to these three to talk about today. So, the first scenario is option one. And so, Joe talked about that being the smaller project, the 31 million project. And, you know, how we would have to increase your rates in order to afford the debt payments when they start coming due. Now, one of the things that I've done in all of these scenarios... Now, one of the things that I've done in all of these scenarios, because the debt payments are not going to come due until probably the middle of 2027 or 2028. And, you know, it, when those start coming in, it's going to be a significant jump in the budget for the sewer system. What we're trying to do is spread out those rate increases, starting as soon as possible, really, but I would say certainly no later than January of 2024, to start raising rates and saving money for those first loan payments when they come due. Now, the city could push off those rate increases, but what would happen is that when those payments come due, the rates would just skyrocket. I mean, you'd be looking at, you know, 60 to 100-plus percent rate increases to make up for that lost time. So what I had talked to the mayor about was actually setting up a special fund. We could call it a debt service fund, or the city of Philadelphia actually created one, they called it a rate stabilization fund. But basically, we're taking money and putting it in that fund each year with these rate increases. And then when those payments start coming due, you start taking some money out of there so that you can try to, you know, kind of level off those rate increases. And, you know, they're, they're not so significant each year. And in that way, we kind of smooth, smooth it out over time. And you can see with this, so I went out 15 years. So with the first option, you know, we're looking at 10% increases for the first three years, and then we have a seven and a half percent, and then a seven, and a six and a half, and a six. Eventually it gets back down to where you're hopefully just keeping up with inflation. With option two, this would be the whole project, everything on schedule. You know, the rate increases would be higher because you're going to have more debt service that you have to pay. So the first year, I projected 15%, and then we go to two years of 13%, then two 12s, two 11%'s, and six, three, and then we're kind of back at inflation. I also looked at the possibility of delaying construction a year. I would still recommend moving ahead with the design so that you have that shovel-ready project. But if, you know, market conditions were just not favorable, or you need just a little more time to, again, save towards those debt service payments, this helps smooth it out a little bit more. You know, the, I did have to add some inflation in for the project to cover that. You know, but I wanted to show that scenario too. It does smooth out the rate increase a little bit more, but the downside of that is you're delaying it here. I don't know if you can do that, but, you know, I wanted to show that. As if there are any questions. Now, one thing I want to point out with these rate increases, so I have factored in some inflation each year. I have not factored in any growth. I have not taken money away from your stormwater fund. And, you know, we, we went conservative, so there's no grant, and we're using the higher interest rate. We went with a 3% interest rate on the loan. It's certainly possible that you'll get a better funding package with a lower interest rate, some grant funding. Also, you know, if inflation teams down, you know, depending on how the bids come in, this could change. So this is a forecast, and I would expect that, you know, probably every couple of years, you're going to reevaluate these rates, and you may find that, you know, it's not necessary to, to go quite that high. But certainly for the first couple of years, I think you would want to raise the rates so that you are, are saving for these loan payments that would be coming due.
Looking at your 15-year plan, I'm just looking at option two on schedule here. Roughly ballpark, 30 million would be your, your debt payment. So if we're looking at a 55, 54, 55 million dollar project, where's that other 15 million dollars? Are we looking at that going longer than?
Yes.
So what's the length of time that we'd be looking at?
I ran this with a 30-year loan.
Okay.
So I didn't go up full, I, when, when an application would go to Ohio EPA, we would show a pro forma that would go out. The full length of the loan term. Any questions?
Hard to ask.
Yeah.
If anybody in the public has any questions, please, you can speak up.
I think one question that should be noted is, why are we not using stormwater funds to help fund this?
Well, I hope not.
Well, I know, but I, but I think people are going to ask that, or know why. And I think the reason being is because we want to continue to have separation projects out in our community to help get water out of basements, you know, while we're, while we're building this, while we're doing these upgrades to the wastewater treatment plant. Which I think is a great idea.
Okay.
All right, next slide. So, you know, kind of just to summarize those strategies for trying to reduce a dramatic rate hike, because that's, you know, that's always tough to go in and tell a community, you know, you gotta raise your rates 40 to 80 or plus percent. That's, so certainly regardless of what you decide, I would strongly recommend starting to raise those rates as soon as possible, early 2024. Because every year that, that gets delayed, it's, it's just going to be harder. Either you're going to have to make up for lost time with higher rate increases, or you're going to have to push this project out further.
I think that's what we saw a few years ago with our water rate increases. You know, we, we thought we were erring on the side of being kind to the residents by not raising it fast enough, and then when it came time for the need to raise, it was a, it was a significant raise at one time, which really ended up being bad.
Right, right.
So that, that concept is not lost on us, I think, because of that history.
Mr. Chairman, since you brought up water rates, so when Jones and Henry made the plan, like our cadence is doing for water rate increases, we kind of looked at it as, as the funding changed and our revenue was stated, we were growing. And Jones and Henry actually had 20% additional rate increases than what we actually stayed. We have not raised the rate since 2019. We, we didn't think we needed to, so it's been, you know, it's gone on four years since we've had one. So Sheri presented the plan, she, she mentioned it, it's, you know, it's, you start there and then you see how the bids come in, and how the funding and the grants and the interest rates, all that plays together. And this will have to be addressed, the fine tuning should go along, you'll look at it every year.
Right, 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 right.
Well, we, if I could add one more thing, we wanted to present it as, this is what it is, this is without any kind of funding or grants, so this would be.
Worst-case scenario.
Worst-case scenario, right.
But it is.
It is.
When, when is a decision by this committee and the council needed on this?
Like to have a decision by the end of August. We'll be able to go to US EPA and say, here's the plan, and they very much wanted to know that council had seen it, had voted, and it was an agreement.
Okay.
I got a question for Joe.
Sure.
On the plant construction, would you, would you construct the HRT first and then the plant, do the improvements at the plant, or what, would it be done at the same time?
Well, you need, for the HRT to work, you need the pump station and the screen.
I know that, I know that part, yeah.
I mean, you could do that first.
That's the most important part at this point.
Yeah, and then that's probably going to be tied to compliant, a compliant schedule.
Yeah.
So.
So you're saying the high rate would be first?
Yes, yes, yes.
I mean, we could structure the project to include some milestones.
Don't include you, but the question is on my mind. Thank you.
Yep, yep. And we're, we're kind of projecting about, you know, two and a half years of construction, you know, at the plant. A lot of that, I think, is because of sequencing and trying to keep the plant running while we're doing it, so it's kind of a timeline.
I've got several questions for several different areas of you guys' presentation. Okay, so just to make sure that I understand, make sure the public understands, we're going to commit to a project, and then we're going to look for obtaining better funding. So like, like the mayor said, we hate to use that phrase, but the worst-case scenario, we're going to commit to, it, it's going to cost us $54.6 million. And then we're going to go out and try to find ways to alleviate that 56 point, or $54.6 million burden. And so it's really, we don't know how good or how bad that's going to be, but we know that 54.6 million is what we're looking at as a worst-case scenario.
Yes.
Okay, and then that is obtained without any other funding by these increases that you proposed that are going to go out over 15-plus years. So that's, again, if I'm the guy at home paying my bill every month, I'm looking at these, this is the worst possible scenario, but we hope in likelihood is it's not going to be quite this bad, is what we're shooting for, okay?
Yes, yes.
You know, the, the big thing for our community is growth, and, and that's going to come in two areas. It's going to come in, in population growth, and it's going to come in growth of jobs. We've missed out on some opportunities because we didn't have the capacity to handle this. So when we're looking at adding, you know, two tenths of a million gallons a day, is that going to be enough growth? Does that, does that leave enough room?
I think it's more than two tenths.
Two, it's more than that.
Just about half a million gallons.
Half a million gallons.
I, I did make that note here. I have another note here, 0.2 million, and I'm not sure. Oh, that's, we're shy of that at our maximum. So by adding a half million gallons a day, is that going to be enough room to attract the businesses that we potentially have lost out on? Is that going to be enough room? You know, I, I don't want to suggest that we go out and build a mega-plant that's going to be never touched its capacity, but is what we're looking at doing, is it going to be enough? I don't want to get five or 10 years into this and realize that we really screwed up and should have done something else. So do, has there been any, anybody looking at those numbers to see if we're where we should be?
The only thing, I don't know if I have Joe or Orkin checking in, this, this slide number 14, I thought was very helpful, which is a comparison of cities that are working on right now.
Yeah.
And so it puts us up pretty close to top, almost, except for Delaware County and La Pocana, but that's a brand-new construction on that, so.
Yeah, I, I understand that concept, but I don't think we're going to attract 20,000 new people here to town, but, you know, if we want to attract 5,000 people to town, 6,000 people to town, and attract, you know, a, a factory or a facility that's going to bring forth 2, 4, 6, 800 jobs, is what we're looking at enough?
It's going to depend on that factory. So for instance, the last one, you know, that would certainly have made a big difference, probably put us at the top. They still might have to do some pre-treat on their own, especially if they're a food beverage site there, so, yeah, but it'll make, it'll make a huge difference. I mean, so, so we, you know, we're thinking, you know, if we've got a water treatment plant, how, we've got capacity there where we want, and we're on the top in the state, and we've got a wastewater treatment plant, this position is to use Cyrus.
Yeah. So to put my mind at ease, are you, are you saying that with what we're looking at, if we went on option two, for instance, is that, is that put us where we need to be? Is that enough?
In, in my opinion, Joe, or do you?
That's all I've had. I was looking for somebody to agree with that.
Yes, I agree.
Well, you, they have a chart here. It's a 20% increase on your, your flow and 50% increase on your loading. So loading would be a lot of the factories, is where we lost.
Yeah, and another question that came to my mind that I'm sure people in the public are asking, you know, we're only two tenths of a million gallons shy of our max now. We've seen a significant population decline over the last 10 to 20 years. How does that, how do those two things correlate? I mean, are we as a smaller group of people making more waste?
I think, you know, you could look at it in different ways. That would be one of them. I think, I, I prefer to think that we're seriously undercounted in the last census. Well, when we have a rate event, that, that goes into our average.
Yeah. Okay.
So that's what eats up that. Our, our normal flow.
Dry weather.
Dry weather flow is like 1.5 million gallons.
Okay.
And then whenever.
So in the past, when we did have more population, we were exceeding our capacity more often when we had significant wet weather events.
Because you still have the same, pretty much still have the same wet weather events, so it stays right around 3.0. Because we can only put so much through the plant, so we max out at the plant.
So what's going on in the CSO that we aren't even counting in?
No.
Okay.
That makes sense.
I think that's all the questions I had, sir.
I would want to say, on this draft, on the rate hikes, it, the first eight to nine years will be the biggest change. After that, it's going back to below what we increased it just recently.
Right, right.
So, yeah, the next eight to nine years is going to be a little hard to swallow sometime, but that's just an estimate at not having any relief on the funding, so.
Right.
It's good to prepare for the worst so that we can hopefully get something better.
And to add to that, Mark, unfortunately, the cost of growth is this. You know, and if we do nothing, we're never going to be able to grow.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not saying. I agree, we, we just want to let the public know that the first eight years, eight to nine years will be the hardest. After that, it levels off.
Right.
If nothing else changes. Things change.
Keep in mind, you know, Sheri, you know, when she did her projections here, she, she projected it without any growth.
That's, that's what I said.
Right.
So if you get growth, if growth actually comes, you'll bring more revenue.
And it eases the burden on everybody.
But, yeah, that's what I said. It'll be adjusted if growth comes, we have more income, we can adjust if we can afford it.
Mr. Chairman, a couple of things to consider. So when we, when this council and Mayor Moore first started planning the water treatment plans, that was at a much higher interest rate. And so the initial proposal from Jones and Henry was about a 4, 4 and 1/2 percent on 30-year, and well, the interest rates were well under 2%. So we were able to drop our mortgage, our amortization schedule now from 30 years, I think, to 20, already paid six years off. So in really 14 years, you're going to, so that, that will, talk about the entire utility bill.
Right.
You know, that'll be other for future administrations inside what you're going to do.
Right.
And then the only thing I want to say about interest rates, Sheri, we don't really know, but it looks like inflation has peaked. There may be one more raise from the Federal Reserve next month, and then by the time we start the financing, the, the construction loans, we could be in the, you know, 2% range, which was, it makes a substantial difference in the payments.
Right, I'm just saying, this is just showing us what.
Yes, well, that's why we were.
Currently.
But you, you had said there are some 0% options out there as well?
So for the design, they.
Just the design?
Yes, that, this year, they're still offering those 0% planning and design loans, and you can make a balloon payment, basically roll it into the construction.
These limits are fixed, though, their, their rate will stay what we sign on it for.
Yeah, it's zero. Yeah, yes, yes.
I have a couple more questions, too. Did you do a study on what a new plant would cost completely?
We did. It's part of our analysis here. We did, we did look at, at plant options. You know, one of the options was to upgrade existing plant, but we also looked at, at two other alternatives for basically new plants.
Yeah.
So we looked at like an oxidation-type ditch technology, and we looked at a sequence and batch reactor-type technology, and those are, those are documented in the report.
Okay. Do you know what the cost of those was?
Uh, off the top of my head, I don't recall, but roughly 18, 20 million dollars more.
Okay, okay.
And we don't have the space to do it.
No, we don't, yeah.
That's kind of what I was, the impression that we just didn't have anywhere to do that.
And second question I got, on this list on page 14, Circleville, you said is starting a new facility.
a new facility now. Did they get grant money down there, do you know? And the rest of them, did they or not?
Yeah, I don't know specifically how they funded those projects.
Okay.
Something I could find out.
Okay, that'd be nice to know if they did, just to give us an idea, maybe what would...
Yeah, a lot of folks use the Water Pollution Control Loan Fund.
Yes.
You know, because it's reduced, it's below market, you know.
We did that, we did that before, so, yeah, sure. Okay.
That is, I mean, they do have a sequencing batch plant, and they have room for it in the one quarter preliminary. I mean, there is, they do have... We did look at, trying to figure out how to fit it on-site.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
So will we just put this on our next agenda and have further discussions next week or two weeks?
Good sir.
Yeah. Okay. Do you agree with that? Put this on our agenda for next meeting?
Continue to have this conversation.
Sure. Do we refer to our, to the general counsel?
Well, I think that comes when we make a motion from this committee to decide which route we want to push forward.
Mr. Chair, would you like our cadence to be back in that next meeting, two weeks?
If we could have somebody, so we have...
Or even available online if we have questions. I don't know what the drive is like for you guys to be here, but...
I'm coming for him, he's going to be happy to have me come back.
If we could have...
Would it at least have somebody, if not all of you, back just in case we have questions? And that'll give the, you know, members of the public might, you know, come up with a lot of questions, too.
Okay, thank you. We've been rather lengthy. I don't think you might want to talk about the open projects right now, so. Any public participation? If not, I will adjourn finance at 7:12 PM. I'd like to call the service committee meeting together, call it to order at 7:15 PM. Members present are Steve Young, Seeran Sharik, Brenton Potter, and myself, Chairman. Is there any public participation for the service committee? Seeing none, we got any, any open projects we'd like to discuss on this committee?
No.
Seeing none, I'll ask again for public participation. Seeing none, I'd like to adjourn at 7:16. Thank you.
Call Health and Safety to order at 7:15 PM. Members present are Steve Young, Mark McKeever, myself, Chair, Mr. Wireball is absent. Is there any public participation for Health and Safety?
Vicki Deshaun, 11:08, Hillcrest Drive, U.S.R. As I have stated before, I have no opinion, one way or the other, on the designated outdoor refreshment area, also known as DORA. My only concern is that the application approved by council will be followed. Page four of the application states that the proposed boundary extends between Perry Street and Charles Street in the north-south direction, and extends between Poplar Street and East Street in the east-west direction. Signage will be located at the ingress and egress of the DORA boundaries. Page five has a map identifying the signage locations, and page 10 states DORA signage will be located at the ingress and egress of the DORA boundaries, as well as in high-traffic areas. At the November 3, 2022 Health and Safety Committee meeting, an email was read from Aaron Stein with the Crawford Partnership concerning the city's approval of a permanent DORA. In that email, she stated that permanent signage needed addressed. At the June 6, 2023 council meeting, I informed council that the required DORA signs stating no alcohol beyond this point were not posted. At the July 5, 2023 council meeting, Mayor Reeser advised that some of the temporary signs had been located and would be posted by Friday, July 7, 2023. He also stated that they would work on some permanent plan. Councilperson Sherry questioned why the signs during the temporary DORA were placed across the streets instead of within the DORA boundaries. As I daily checked on the posting of the signs, I found that they were not posted by Friday, July 7, 2023, as promised by the mayor. As of tonight, only five of the required 14 signs have been posted. However, two of the posted signs are in areas not identified on the DORA boundary map, and the remaining three signs are posted across the streets. So it would appear that there are no appropriately posted signs at this time. I would like to know, one, where are the remaining nine temporary signs? Two, when will all 14 signs be posted in the designated areas? Three, what has been found out about the permanent signs? And four, has any consideration been given to putting a temporary stop to DORA until all signs have been posted? Thank you.
Vicki, I'm going to start with number three on your list, because I met with the administration and got a lot of those questions answered. They had talked to the partnership and the chamber, and they then collected all of the signage that they had over there and took it in-house here. So everything that you've seen, what little bit you've seen put out was done by the administration. And then they are working with the street department on permanent signage, taking into consideration your concerns with it being across the street or things like that. Some posts will need to be placed permanently. A lot of the areas, it was concrete, and they were using a yard-style sign, so they weren't able to post them because of that. But they are working with Jeff Dunn on getting the new signs created and getting them posted. I don't know the timeline, just "we're working on it" was the answer I was given.
And that was the answer given by?
Correct.
By who?
I get it, yeah, by the administration.
Okay.
Yeah, so that answers number three, and that kind of is where we're at right now. I don't know if they put up all of the remaining temporary signs, because those temporary signs weren't meant to be used at this point. We should have already had permanent signs.
Correct.
So I don't know that they had a plethora of temporary signs to put out. I don't know if they, and I'll ask that question tomorrow, if the timeline isn't going to be fast enough, are they going to consider getting some more temporary signs to put up until such a time than permanent ones? I'll see if I can get a timeline on both of those.
Okay, I would appreciate it. Okay, thank you.
Any other public participation? All right, we had a speaker on Tuesday that wanted us to address fireworks and felines. I did look, we don't really have anything in the codified ordinances. The fireworks are going to fall under the noise ordinance, and that's really the only thing I could find, although the rest of it falls under the Higher Vice Code on the fireworks. And then as far as the felines go, I found a lot of older information about animal control officer, which we don't even have, you know, that's put off onto the county, and I know the administration said they were going to check with the county, and Brian had said that he was going to check with them, he's going to be at a meeting with them, and he's not here tonight to update us on that. So my recommendation is, at least as far as the felines go, we can talk about that at our next meeting unless you have further information.
So I actually called the county, because I had, there was actually a cat run, I thought it was sick rabbit, whatever was going on with it, so I called the county thinking that it was animal control, and they're not, it's actually a dog ward.
So that's all the county does?
That's all the county does, is dogs only, so.
So it's in our, in our codified ordinances that we have animal control, and it's, that was dated, I think, in 1956, if I remember right. Probably I'll look at that, and if nothing else, updating that, because it does say that the...
Could we talk to the county and see if we could jointly use, and then try to get them to do dogs and cats? And, I mean, it's already there, they have the equipment. Why couldn't we?
Yeah, I don't know, that's probably the question to start with the commissioners, you know, do they want to fund anything further than dogs, and why dogs and only dogs? Is that the question?
I was, yeah, yeah, they kind, she kind of cut me off when I started talking about cats, she's like, yeah, just dogs. I'm like, okay.
We can ask, see if one of the commissioners could come to the next meeting and participate. I don't know.
Would the fireworks law go under the state law that was passed?
Yeah, that made, that was about the sale of them, though.
And making so, it was all sort of...
Was it about their date?
Yep.
And it was during 4th of July, New Year's.
Yeah, okay.
And I don't remember the other day, there was, I think Labor Day, but I'm not sure.
I saw our, our ordinance referred back to the Higher Vice Code, and I did not have time to read that part of it yet, so it'd be interesting to see who has the authority to do what further than what we're already doing now.
I would say, the people asked if there's a way that we could add more to our ordinance to put more stricter rules for in-town, because the old ordinance kind of got bumped out by the way that they changed it. And they also wanted to know the specific dates, because it's been going on for over 60 days straight for some people. So that was what we were supposed to be looking into, so I don't know, if we just need more information and more time to do that?
Yeah, I know we need to look at the Higher Vice Code and see, I mean, we don't need to rewrite our laws, if what's in the revised codes there, let's refer back to that if it works, but I think we need to take a look at that. Does that sound good? Do you guys will look at that again in two weeks?
Start with that first, and then we can go from there.
Yeah, okay. Any other projects that you want to bring up? Any other public participation? If not, we'll adjourn at 7:23 PM.
Okay, this is Health and Safety for...
No, it's not.
I mean, sorry, Public Lands and Buildings for July 20, 2023. We're starting at 7:24 PM. Members present are Kevin Myers, Brenton Potter, and myself, Seeran Sharik, and Dan Wireball is absent. Do we have any public participation? Seeing none, do we have any open projects we need to speak about this evening? Okay, do we have any other open, public participation? Then I will go ahead and end the meeting at 7:25 PM, and y'all have a good night.
Okay, I'll call Plating to order at 7:26 PM. Members present, Kevin Myers, Terry Spiegel, and myself, Chair, Dan Wireball is absent. Any public participation? Okay. First item on agenda is the housing. I know we did a study two, three years ago, two or three years ago, we got a report on...
That was four or five years ago now.
Well, I can't remember exactly when, but...
That was done through the Crawford County Partnership.
That's correct. So that did show that we did have a need, we do have a need, but we need more information. We wanted to get it on the agenda so we can get the information together and then present it. If anybody from the public has any information or questions they can ask or email the information.
What type of housing you talking, low-income housing or housing...
There was a multiple.
As far as on the study, we had a need from the very bottom to the very top.
Yeah, we had it for all, all levels of income. With that, we'll keep the project going, we'll bring it up at the next committee meeting if we can get some more information, and bring up the old study, and I'll have to dig through my notes. Okay, is there any open projects you want to discuss? Okay, I don't see any at the moment. Public participation. All right, none being, I will adjourn Plating at 7:28 PM.
I'd like to call Economic Development to order at 7:28 PM. Members present, Seeran Sharik, Mark McKeever, Steve Young, and myself, Chair. We'll open the floor for public participation. Seeing none, we'll move on to open projects. So I'm assuming there's none, but if anybody would like to bring any up?
No, thank you.
No? Public participation once again? Seeing none, we will adjourn at 7:29 PM.